About nine years and I'm retired from Libby Glass and Hospice of Northwest Ohio up in Toledo. And occasionally I teach at Tiffin University in the Business Department. That's when they get really desperate for adjuncts, but for the most part, I'm retired. And I've been involved with this homeless mission for several years now through the Community Task Force, and now the Seneca County Council on Homelessness. And I just wanted to make a few remarks initially, beginning with mission, which is, we are looking to create an infrastructure and a culture that will transform people's lives from dependency to self-sufficiency. And really stress that because that really is the mission of what we're trying to accomplish here. We think often of homelessness as being like what I saw in Toledo. People sleeping on the streets or pushing a shopping cart with empty cans for recycling. And we see that as the face of homelessness. When I came here nine years ago, I didn't see that much of it. But I found out that it is here, homelessness is here, it has a different face. Being involved with the Community Task Force, got to know and work with Pat DiMonte from the former director of the United Way, Jason Pollak, who was First Call for Help. And I learned a lot from them about what the whole piece of homelessness really is down here. And basically what they would tell me is that people would show up without a place to stay, without a place to sleep. Maybe they were experiencing generational poverty, maybe they had lost a job, maybe they had an addiction issue, maybe it was a medical issue, any number of things. But homelessness is real. People were falling off the radar. People were unable for a number of reasons, any number of reasons, to make their rent, make their mortgage payments, pay their utilities. And so it was very difficult, as Pat and Jason would tell me, it was very difficult to see what they could do to help these people get back on their feet again. What did they need? What did they have to have? And initially, what would happen is people would be given maybe a month's rent, or maybe they needed a couple of nights stay at a Days Inn or something like that. But ultimately, there wasn't a whole lot of follow-up. There wasn't really a whole lot that could be done because we just didn't have the resources. So somebody comes in and they get two nights stay at a motel and then they're gone. And then they don't have another place to stay again. And so maybe they're not living on the street, but maybe they're a couch surfer. They're living with a family member, a friend, or crowding into a small apartment with way too many people. And so it goes and it kept going that way. But yet nothing was really getting solved. What we would do was we would pay for people to stay in a motel, but there was no follow-up because we didn't have the resources to follow up. And so what we were doing was putting Band-Aids on a really big problem. That's what we've been doing now for quite a while, meeting temporary needs with temporary fixes. And so with this lack of resource, we looked and thought, what can we do? How can we do this better? Because here's the thing, as we're trying to support people who are homeless in this county, in this city, we're realizing we're probably spending around $175,000 to $200,000 a year to put Band-Aids on this problem. So what if we looked at this in terms of, again, going back to the mission, creating a situation where people could be moved from dependency to self-sufficiency? And that's what we're trying to do now. So as of January of the last year, we became a 501(c)(3), a nonprofit. And our goal is to create what we are calling the Transformational Life Center, which is a facility, it's an emergency shelter, where people can come in and they will get food and they will get a bed, but they'll get more than that. It won't just be a one and done. Once somebody comes in, the next question is, okay, why are you here? What are your goals? What are we gonna do tomorrow, the next day, the next day? To move you from where you are now to where you need to be 30, 60, 90 days down the road. So what we want to do is we want follow-up. We want people to be able to be tracked. And we want case management. We want to partner with organizations that can provide counseling when it's needed, life skills when it's needed, job skills when it's needed, and ongoing mentoring. That's really what we're trying to provide here. So the Emergency Homeless Facility, which provides for a couple of things, immediate needs, food and shelter, but also a personal assessment focused on developing an individual plan for assisting clients in their efforts to move from dependency to self-sufficiency. This would begin with an intake process and services would be matched to the individual client, all with the goal of saying, we're not gonna keep putting Band-Aids anymore. We're not gonna fix you, but we want to assist you to get where you need to be long-term. If we're spending a lot of money just to put people up for a couple of nights, that money could much be better spent by working with folks to improve their life skills and their job skills that would make them then self-sufficient. That's our goal. And what we've done over several years is we've visited many different shelters, Youngstown, Toledo, Marion, Fremont, and we've seen the model work. I visited last Friday again in Fremont, Liberty Center. Started with a 900 square foot facility, 10 beds. It's now a 4,700 square foot facility with almost 30 beds. And they are doing just that. They are doing job skills training, life skills training, getting people off the dependent roles and into jobs and careers. What's really, I think, most here, the biggest problem here is, this is men and women in our community, but it's also children. We have families, we have families that are homeless. We just dealt with one a couple of weeks ago. And the children are potentially gonna grow up to be homeless also if we can't turn some things around here. So right now, we have probably 100 children in our Tiffin City Schools that would meet the definition of being homeless. And their best meal comes from the school. So what I would like to do is kind of maybe turn this over a little bit to Shaila. Shaila, having been, has a lot of experience in working with a shelter. So Shaila, if you're there, could you kind of share your thoughts with the group and kind of take it from there?
Yes, thanks, Tim. During my time supervising the Morrison House, I learned a lot about the homeless crisis we have in Seneca County. Morrison House operated with 17 beds, which for the most part year-round remained full. At any given time, we had approximately 20 to 30 people on our waitlist needing somewhere to go, needing a bed to sleep in. Morrison House does not serve as an emergency shelter. It is transitional housing. Our, the clients that came in could stay for up to six months as long as they were following the rules and the program guidelines. The issue with that is there was no huge overturn. It wasn't quick. Beds did not open up very quickly to those who were on the waitlist. As many of you know, Morrison House is not currently operating due to the fire that was very unfortunate last spring, which right now I know they are fixing it up, but I'm unsure of when that's gonna be completed. So we're already down 17 beds in our community and we need way more than that. Given the fact that we don't have another shelter in our county, the only referrals I could give to clients on waitlist were to the agencies like United Way, GLCAP, Salvation Army, or shelters that are not in our county. Many times the issue with that being that if the person has a job in Tiffin or in town or has children enrolled in school here, then they're forced to quit their jobs. The kids have to switch schools. It also takes these folks away from any supports that they may have left to move them out of county. Going to an out-of-county shelter oftentimes makes a tough situation even worse. And I've had to refer people out many, many times. Whether they took that opportunity or not, a lot of people didn't want to leave town because their kids were in school, so they would sleep in their car, which is really sad for the entire family. Many times people would call to inquire about a bed, it would be after 5:00 PM. All the local agencies are closed who offer resources. Like Tim spoke about the overnight stay at a hotel, which leaves people sleeping in their vehicles outside in public areas, sleeping in garages, and best-case scenario, sleeping on a friend or family member's couch. The people looking for shelter come from a variety of different situations. Many of them come from evictions, some come from domestic violence situations, coming out of rehab centers, jails, being asked to leave a family member's or friends' home because they've been there too long. And especially now with COVID, people are losing their jobs, which has created an even worse homeless crisis. They're being able, they're not able to pay their rent, leading to eviction. And if they are eligible for unemployment or pandemic unemployment, that can take up to months to receive. So it's not like they lose their job today and next week when they would have got a paycheck, they get that unemployment. It takes weeks, sometimes months, which makes it almost impossible to pay your bills when you don't have any support or you don't have anybody who can loan you the money. And we do have agencies that will help, but oftentimes it's one month. We can help you for one month, but not next month and not the month after that. You can't come back for 60 days or 90 days, which isn't solving the problem because they're continuing to get behind. These clients face many obstacles such as lack of life skills, job skills, family supports, childcare. I've seen so many times people come in, they don't have an ID, they don't have their birth certificate or a social security card. You can't get a job without those things, but they don't have the money to get those things. And they don't have anybody to loan them the money for those things. They may not have a license or a vehicle, or they don't understand the resources that are available to them or how to obtain those resources. The Supportive Services at the Transformation Life Center would assist in meeting the immediate needs of people in crisis. People are unable to focus on changing their lives if they cannot even meet their basic needs. Once basic needs are met, like food and shelter, then they can begin to focus on the steps that it will take to be self-sufficient successfully, long-term. The center, like Tim said, will offer case management, will link to services, job coaching and things of that nature. We're talking about transforming lives in our community and it's gotta be a community effort. We definitely need more beds in our county. More often than not, I saw numerous families with children come into the Morrison House and have nothing. And honestly, it was normal for them. They were used to that lifestyle because it's just that vicious cycle. And once you're in it, it's so hard to get out without any support. It's like trying to climb your way out of a hole and it's impossible without some wraparound services. So thank you for your time and I will let Beth Schweitzer talk.
Hey, Beth, I think you're...
Are you muted?
There you go.
Right now, I'm unmuted.
Okay, you got it.
Since I came to Tiffin six, almost seven years ago, I was lucky enough to be invited to come to the Community Task Force, which is where I really, my education on homeless in Tiffin really started. And again, I think it's one of those things, when you enter a community, especially here, we didn't always see that. Although I did notice a few people I would see on the streets and I would ask folks, I see this particular person quite often sitting on the park bench or whatever and learn that that person was in a homeless situation. And of course, being involved in health, I look at the health of a community and its residents and I know that the situation of the homeless does not put them in a position to be well-cared-for with medical care. You know, we know that they don't have regular meals on the table and their children, as was mentioned, we have kids in our school who are actually homeless and the only good meal they may get in a day is what they get at school. So I, when we formed the Coalition, I decided that I wanted to remain involved in that. And I think we come to you because you're community leaders and our citizens look to you and we feel you can help provide that information they need about the homeless situation. And by knowing more about what we want to do, we really hope that we can become partners with you in making a better community by taking care of those citizens we have in our county who are experiencing homelessness, sometimes by no fault of their own, most of the time by no fault of their own. And again, they just sometimes do not know where to turn, where to go, what to do, what the next step is after finally getting that meal and a chance to have a warm bed for the night. So we really want to work to provide something for our citizens to make us the healthiest, mentally healthy, physically healthy, and just to enforce the community and to get these people be part of our community and be citizens who can contribute and contribute to all the good that's going on in Tiffin. Thank you so much for having us.
Thanks, Beth, we appreciate that. And Pastor Bailey, I know you can talk about, you know, we're looking at a couple of facilities here in the next couple of days and maybe talk a little bit about our infusion of resources and things like that. You are being the treasurer of the group, so go ahead and talk about that.
That's never fun to be last, everybody's already said everything. So I came to Tiffin about four and a half years ago, got involved more with the homelessness situation here with Project Seneca Helps. I don't know if you recall that, but we had a one-time day of providing supplies for the community and just eye-opening to see what the need is. Most of us are somewhat blind to that in our own community, myself included. And then I've been blessed too with the opportunity over the past couple of years to partner with the West Ohio Food Bank out of Lima. And we do a one-time food distribution a month here in the parking lot at First Lutheran. A year ago, we were averaging about 150 families, about 400 to 500 people per month. We have doubled those numbers. When we had our distribution in December, we had 300-plus families that came through for almost 1,000 people. And all of those people, as Shaila said, are just on that fringe. COVID has not been kind to people in need. So unfortunately, you know, the light at the end of the tunnel, it's there, but it's still pretty dim and it's a desperate reality for a lot of folks. So we're trying to bring this Transformational Life Center into a vision, reality, knowing the need and knowing where we're at and hoping things get better, but knowing that it's not gonna get better quickly, especially for those that have kind of fallen so far behind. Our ultimate goal would be to provide, you know, two or three, maybe four, family-sized rooms. And by a family room, I would mean, you know, a bed for mom or dad, depending on if both parents are in the picture, and then for the children. So several family rooms and then a women's bunk room and then a men's bunk room. And then each of those bunk rooms could hold, you know, four to six people just depending on the size and the space. We've got a couple pieces of property with buildings already there. Doctors' offices are really convenient for already having a lot of rooms in them. So we've got a few of those that are vacant right now. We've got a group that's gonna go see some of those later this week. So that kind of gets our foot in the door as to starting to bring this reality into, or this vision into a reality. And then we're working on numbers. So we've been blessed, Shaila had a great interview in the paper maybe about a month ago and starting to see the slow trickle-in of gifts. So that's a blessing too. We've also had one pledge of close to $100,000 and we've got about, almost $30,000 in the bank right now. So we've got a good start. And the bigger picture too, when we look at rent and we look at the programs we'd like to offer and the staffing that we need, we estimate our expenses to be around $250,000 or so a year. And as Tim had mentioned, getting things started between the United Way, First Call for Help and all the other programs in town right now. You know, they're spending close to $200,000 or more a year already. So you know, something that can actually make a difference in people's lives, long-term speaking. And that's not to say that the emergency need, the one-night help, isn't gonna go away, but at least we have a great opportunity to make a difference in people's lives, perhaps use the money that's already being spent within the community for a long-lasting impact. And that's what I'm really excited about.
Right, well, thanks Pastor Bailey. I think that's the point that has been made. You know what, when we think about this, what we are definitely looking at a situation where we all, in whatever state in life we're in, we have to be held accountable for what we do. And for people who come into our facility that we want to set, we want to make sure that it's understood from the get-go that there will be accountability, that when someone comes in, you come in not just to stay for a night. You come in to stay, you get food, you get shelter, but now we're gonna start working on your plan. What's your life plan? What's your life plan for you and/or your spouse and your kids? What do you want to do long-term? Because we're not gonna be doing a revolving door. It's going to be, I think mentoring is gonna be such a huge part of this. And networking out to other organizations and places that can help us provide that. I've seen just in my own experience and the work that I've done on the job, mentoring is incredibly important. I've done mentoring in a hospice setting. It's just, it is amazing what it can do if people are walking the journey with you. And really, as generous as this community is, and I believe it is a very generous community, if we could take those resources and put them into real, solid people development, I think it would pay huge dividends, not just in money, but in self-worth and in dignity. And that's really what we're about here. So I would say, unless anybody else has, that's basically what we wanted to share with you. We wanted all of you to know where we are, what we're doing, and we'd certainly like to be able to keep you informed of what we're doing. And so maybe work together on whatever we might be able to do to make this a reality.
Well, Tim, I guess I would say first off, thank you for you and your team coming here this evening to give us this update and share the mission and the things that you're working on. I just want you to know that the floor is yours and your teams, anytime you would like it up here. If there are additional items that you have to update us on or to provide feedback to us, the floor is yours anytime that you all need it. I hope this is the first of many times that the Coalition's coming to us, providing updates. I guess the first thing I have and probably on all our minds, how can we help? How can we, whether it's, I guess on a couple of levels, whether it's city government or whether it's each of us individually, how can we help you and your team with this? Because it's a problem, it's a growing problem, and I think it tugs at all of our heartstrings. If it doesn't tug at your heartstrings, I don't know if you have a heart. So how can we help on a couple of different levels?
Well, and other people, the other folks here might want to mention this. My first thing is, we always talk about time, talent, and treasure. And certainly, treasure is always a big thing with something like this. But the other thing that I think is really important is time. I think some of the biggest things that we're gonna need is people who are willing to... I can just imagine a situation where, this kind of sounds weird, but okay, so we've got a shelter. And if the mayor and the city council maybe even stepped by and met some folks and just talked with them, just got to know them and they could have a conversation with our city leaders, to kind of give an idea of where they're coming from and where you all are coming from, what might that do to spur them on to try to attain better stuff, better things? You know, if they see that happening, maybe that's an incentive for them. The other thing is, I think, I believe very much, and I teach my students this all the time, networking, networking, sharing the story. You never know who you tell something about and, oh my God, I happen to have that particular talent. I can help with that. Or if it's fundraising or if it's maybe mentoring. I know a group of people who would be really good at mentoring, maybe we contact them. Those are the kinds of contacts I think that are really, really important. And I don't know, Shaila or Beth or Pastor Bailey, any thoughts about that?
And just to note, we have your support and what you said, Mayor Montz, that, you know, you know it's here. Our city council is aware of it and just keeping people informed about it, letting them know that the Coalition's here and we can use community support. And I can't think of anything better than community people coming together to help support something like this, whether it be elbow grease, if we find a place and it needs a little sprucing up or a lot of sprucing up, just to put in some time perhaps doing that, just letting people know we're here, what our mission is and that you support that and understand what we're trying to do.
Absolutely, yeah.
Tim, how does one go about getting in touch with your organization?
Well, we do have a Facebook page and we have a website, but you can actually, email address, our Facebook page is open. And probably the best way to do that is just to, if you were to shoot me an email, my personal email, and there's a S-C-C-O-H Gmail account. People can access that too. But if you want to shoot me an email, my email, you can do that, I can give you that. That is just D-A Galvins, D as in David, D-A Galvins, G-A-L-V-I-N-S@hotmail.com. And then the other one, it should be written down and it escapes me right now, but it's the Gmail account for that, for our...
For the council?
Yeah.
It's S-C-C-O-H-44883@gmail.com is our Coalition email. And then we have a pretty great Facebook page where we share a lot of different information. I have really good rapport with previous clients who I've worked with and they've shared a lot of their stories on our Facebook page, really inspiring stuff. So please check it out if you have time. It's pretty deep stuff, some of these stories they share.
Thank God you were still there, Shaila. Shaila knows all this. I'll tell you what, Shaila has been, she's been in charge of our Education Committee and she has done amazing outreach. When we originally started setting up the Facebook page, we got it going, but Shaila has enhanced that so much. So yeah, I would be lost in that whole arena if you weren't around. So, but thank you for coming today.
Shaila, could you give us that address again, please? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, thanks, Shaila.
No problem.
Yeah, all the council members should have received print-offs if they've been to their mailbox recently and should have a lot of this information there. Yep, I see Councilman Jones waving his, thanks, Ken. If you don't have it, let me know and I can send you the email. And maybe, Tim, if you're comfortable with it, maybe I will just send you an introductory email and copy all of our council members on it so everyone ensures they heard your email correctly. And that way, if any of them wish to volunteer in private to help with you in any of the committees or whatnot, that way you're in touch versus... that way you're in touch versus everybody trying to hunt down one another's emails.
Sure, that'd be fine, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate that.
I'll do that after this meeting's over. So we really appreciate it. I know you've got my full support, anything we can do to help here at the city. We need to tackle this community because I always say, Tiffin is a very special place that whenever any kind of a need arises, this community rallies together and helps people who are in the need. And I think for too long, most people in this community have not realized that this was such a problem and a need. And now that they are becoming aware of it, I think it's kind of evidenced by the fact of how quickly you've been able to do some fundraising and get people involved. This community is second to none at helping people and organizations when there is a need for it. And I think we're doing exactly what we need to do is get that information out there and tell folks, we need your help. We need fundraising. You know, regardless, some people have, some people have money and no time and others have not much money, but they have a lot of time on their hands. And we need to connect people with whatever role and not make anyone feel like it's either an all money thing or all a volunteer thing, that you literally need help each and every way you can get it. That people need to stop thinking the traditional ways that if I can't give money or if I don't have time, I can't help. You're looking for help in almost any way individuals are willing to do so. And that's why we're here to try to assist you with that.
Exactly. And I think, Mr. Mayor, what you're saying is so critical because, yeah, we're not putting our hand up for money. I mean, not that we need money, but it's a lot about building relationships. And I think it's easy to build relationships in Tiffin because people are open to it. That's what we're looking to do. So if it's a question of being openness, people coming in, spending time getting to know the residents, the residents getting to know people, working together. Yeah, it's not just about money. It's about, it's about relationships and times and being willing to support one another. Yes.
Councilman Yonatuno, you had your hand up?
Mr. President, I have a kind of a curiosity question. Is the concept going to be kind of like a Ronald McDonald House where they can do chores and service groups and stuff can bring in food and take care of food one night? You know, maybe set up a schedule with other service groups to maybe feed your group at times?
Yeah, that's, there's several things that we've looked at there. In fact, somebody had the suggestion of when we built, when we get the place fixed up, that maybe one of the churches even said something about maybe adopting a room or, you know, to fix it up or whatever. But the basic, the basic structure is, is going to be, people are going to be living there for a period of thirty, sixty to ninety days, depending on how well they do. If you're doing the thirty days and you're doing well and you're following your program, then you can stay for another thirty. And you can stay up to ninety days, at which point we're hoping that you'll be able to transition into either a transitional shelter or your own housing. But it steps along the way. So when people come in, you know, bringing food and bringing all those things, they'd be huge, it would be huge. The other part of that would be coming in and just being with people and talking with them and in a way kind of providing some mentoring in an informal way. Because that's going to be really important too. Our goal, our goal really is for those people who come in and who want to come into our shelter, they, we want to focus on goals. What are you trying to achieve? How can you achieve those goals? How can we help you achieve those goals? And when people come in from other places, community, the whole community, they can, those folks can learn about how they can achieve their own goals too. So that's going to be really helpful.
Well, and I'll say, many of times when I had clients come in from into Morrison House, coming out of homelessness, one of their biggest concerns was no support. They have no support, they have no family, either they burned their bridges or they've never had anybody or they've moved here from far away, whatever the case may be. And so many times I was told, thank you, thank you for just listening to me. Thank you for just being here for me. Thank you for making sure that my kids had socks on their feet. Such basic, basic things that we don't think about and they are so thankful for. So yes, I would say groups bringing in meals and things like that. We did that at Morrison House as well. Church groups would come in and bring a meal and visit for a couple hours and they love that. They love, a lot of times they love to share their stories. Not everybody, not all of them. But they just want to be heard too and understood. And to have somebody who will just sit there and listen and to feel heard and supported is literally all they need mentally and emotionally in that moment. So I really feel like, like Tim said, mentoring is going to be huge. And just having support, just being there is going to be really big. Just that community atmosphere wrapping around them is going to be really necessary for what we're trying to do.
Absolutely.
Councilwoman Boyle?
I just wanted to say really quickly, you know, I just want to echo a lot of what the mayor said. I really appreciate all of your guys' efforts and also coming in on here and talking, each one of you talking about what you've done so far and what your plans are. Because it's really, it's informative to me personally and I, you know, I probably speak for everybody on council here. So I really appreciate, you know, everything that you guys have done and everything that you're going to do. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
Councilman Perry?
Yeah, first off, obviously I want to thank you guys for coming in. I can't think of an issue that, you know, is more important than helping out fellow Tiffinites and their time in need. As a person of city council, as a citizen, as a businessman, I love for my time and money to go to something I can see affect directly. So I'd love to keep that in Tiffin and help this problem. So thank you guys for all your efforts on that. One question I did have, I was curious on, say someone comes in and they break the rules or you have to, they're not following, you know, like you said, accountability. What is the next set of steps or actions that you would take with that individual?
Well, I think, and depending on the situation, and this is, these are some things that we have to work out. But we've kind of talked with other organizations about this. Depending, of course, on the infraction. If it's really bad, you know, that's one thing. But what we want to try to do is set up a system where it's not necessarily your first offense you're out the door. But you have to be, you have to be accountable. And there may be a point in time where you have to say, if you are not willing to follow the rules, then you're going to have to be, you're going to have to be, you have to be put out, you can't come in anymore. So one of the things, and I guess I kind of go back to my old, you know, days in Toledo in manufacturing, where we had a kind of a program, well, it was like a disciplinary step. You know, step one, well, you get slapped on the wrist. But at some point in time, you set up the thing where these are the steps. If you can, if you continue to infringe on those steps, given, yeah, and we would have to develop that, you're going to hit a point where you will not be able to stay here anymore.
I would assume that it would almost be a process of two to three write-ups, you're out. Again, depending on what exactly it is that's done. I don't believe that drugs and alcohol, those things will not be tolerated.
Right.
Facility due to children. So that's probably going to be an automatic no. You're going to have to leave or we're going to have to figure out something else for you. And that doesn't necessarily mean kicking them out on the street. If it is an addiction issue and they are asking for help, then maybe we link them to a detox and a rehab service. Same thing for alcohol. But if they're like, no, I don't want your help, okay, well then you can't stay here anymore. If you're, you know, you can't use drugs in our facility. Obviously, if it's a violent issue, they're gone right away. The most important thing is going to be the safety of the staff, the volunteers and the other clients in the shelter. But I would say we'll do formal write-ups, most likely. I'm sure there would be some kind of formal process. You break this rule, you don't do your tour this day, you get a write-up. You know, two days you get to, okay, the third one, you're done. Like we're not going to keep playing that game. And I'm sure it will be something to that extent.
Yeah, you know, Shaila has worked with us directly and that's really helpful. And a lot of times when we develop stuff like this, we stay in contact with other like organizations. And we ask them, how do you do that? Yeah, what, and we get guidance from other sources. I've gotten so much guidance recently from like from Fremont. When we went to Youngstown, it was just a lot of this information that we can accumulate. And we put it all together and we say, okay, this seems to work in a lot of different settings. And so once we get that input from people, you know, you can't, you just got to make sure that what you're doing is reasonable and that it's effective.
Right. The only other thing I would add, and you touched on it before, Tim, is, you know, kind of the same style that Matt Coleman and the Smile Organization does.
Right.
Entering, having, if you could assign almost a mentor to each of these people that if they have a question about a certain skill or how they go about to do something, I think that would be kind of awesome. And that would be a way that people could, you know, donate their time and stuff if they don't have money to donate.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Yeah, and Matt's a great guy. I was a mentor for five years with the program till, but yeah, Matt's great. So yeah, you're right. And I think that, what I found too, and I kind of a model that I used when I was at hospice in Northwest Ohio, was that even when I was a volunteer there for three years and then I ran the program and I found that anybody, when people came in to want to volunteer, one of the first things I did was assign them a mentor to walk with them as they're going through their process. I just so believe in having that contact, that one-on-one contact. So you're right about that. Very, absolutely.
Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. As the four of you spoke, I jotted down five questions I was going to ask, but now I have your Gmail address, I can send those questions along and get them answered. My background, real quick, is I've lived in Tiffin all my life. And I guess I've stereotyped people if they're not on a park bench, if they're not in front of the courthouse, if they're not sleeping in their car under a bridge, I guess that's what I call homelessness. And until I got this one and a half page flyer before the meeting, I read through it, highlighted a few things. I guess I wasn't aware the situation was that bad here in Tiffin. And it's a real eye opener, so I'll email my questions to you.
Councilwoman Gill, you had your hand up?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, and thank you all for your time this evening. I appreciate how you've said that we can help in terms of networking and in terms of support. What I'd like to know, and this is a question, you know, for our law director and our mayor and for other members of council, is what could the city do financially? Or would we be permitted financially to make this a line item in our budget? Because there'll be expenses. I mean, you'll have utilities and everything else. And if the city could kick in even a relatively small amount, I feel like that could go a long way and I'd be hard pressed to come up with any, with many better investments than right here in our community and helping those that need a helping hand.
I, we'll need someone to pick up the trash. You know, if the city could foot that bill or something like that. I'm sure there are things like that that we're going to need in relation to the things the city provides its citizens in residential homes and other places. That's just a thought, but it's good to think outside the box like you are, that there could be some ways that you could financially support us.
Law Director?
Yes, Ben, to answer your question about financial support, you have the legal ability to financially support a private organization, which the Homelessness Council is, as long as there is a public purpose being provided. And you will need to pass a resolution identifying that public purpose. And I believe that the information you've received this evening essentially provides the record, if you will, for the public purpose, that the Homelessness Council will provide the community. And the information you received this evening could be included in a resolution that would end then with a financial contribution. There is some precedent for this. The city of Tiffin has provided the Team Center, I recall, with funds years ago. And there was clearly a public purpose for that project. So you do have a legal ability to provide financial assistance.
Councilwoman Gillig?
Thank you, Mr. President. Personally, I would love to explore this further on the Finance Committee.
Well, good, we'll assign the project to the Finance Committee for your review.
Thank you, Mr. Gillig.
Well, I've seen the kids that come in, you know, after snow days and they're absolutely starving by the time they get to breakfast or lunch. So I appreciate the efforts you guys are putting forth to serve our friends and neighbors that have fallen on some tough times.
We appreciate that very much.
Anyone else have any questions for the, for Tim and the other members? Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. I said I'd hold my five questions, but right off the top of my head, Morrison House is on Franklin and Perry Street, understand that. As you go out West Perry and Wentz, what is that? I always thought that was part of Morrison House also. What's the difference between those two buildings?
I'll tell you, New Housing Ohio owns both. But the old church, is that what you're talking about? That is a group home for mentally ill individuals, which is a completely different animal than what we're talking about. So yes, that's what that is. It's a group home for mentally ill, the clients suffer from schizophrenia, depression, bipolar, no developmental disabilities, more mental illness, severely mentally ill.
Shaila, I had a question about the Morrison House. The fire caused a lot of damage. What, how are you raising money to make those improvements?
I am no longer with the Morrison House in New Housing Ohio. But I know insurance covered most of the damages. They had a lot of like adjusters coming in and construction contractors. So they had that covering, I think, most of the damages, luckily. Because there was upwards of two hundred thousand, they had to gut the house completely.
So it's, and it's important too, we are separate from the Morrison House. We hope that we can partner with them in certain things. But we have our own board here locally, whereas Morrison House actually had control from New Housing Ohio out of Cincinnati. So, and we had looked at that at one time, maybe seeing if somebody else from anyplace else could actually manage our shelter. But we kind of decided that we wanted to keep it local and with local people. And so that's what we're doing.
Thanks for clarifying that, Tim.
Yeah, it is, you know, I'll tell you what, I'm learning stuff here that I never knew before. And it's been a journey over the last several years, but it's been a great learning experience. But, and that's why I took to Shaila and Beth and Pastor Bailey because I sometimes don't know where I'm going, but they straighten me out, so that's a good thing.
Does anyone else have any questions for Tim and his board? Thank you for your time and we look forward to working with you.
Well, thank you all, we really appreciate it, all of you on council. And Mr. President, Mr. Mayor, we really appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you all.
We appreciate you all, more so than you know. So I'm excited to work with Councilman Gillig and you all to work on this financial piece and see what we can come up with to assist you with your greatest needs there with the organization. So I never want to see anyone in the community. I never want to see any anyone in the community go hungry or go without a roof over their head. But hearing the stories that this is happening even to the children in our school systems, that it gets you. So we've got to get this problem figured out and and city government is going to be a part of the solution. We can assure you all of that. So we're here to help. Thank you for coming this evening.
Well, thank you all. We appreciate it, Mr. Mayor and everybody else on council. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, since we are on this topic, I'm going to bring in Audrey Flood because she was going to discuss the Dream Big Tiffin Initiative. And because this is one of the top 10 projects for the Dream Tiffin, Dream Big Tiffin Initiative, I'm going to bring her in and just let her speak right now so we don't lose track of it. So Audrey, you should be coming in. You'll probably have to unmute yourself, though. There she is.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mr. President and Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I just wanted to briefly mention that this is one of the projects that has come out of the Dream Big Tiffin Initiative that we're doing. So I am working with the homeless council team. They submitted a project as part of that. And that is one of the 10 projects that is kind of up for discussion as part of the Dream Big Tiffin Initiative that I've been discussing with you guys over the past year. So what that means is, for one, any of you who are looking for a way to support it, you can go and take the survey, just go to dreambigtiffin.com and you can, you know, kind of provide your input on which projects you support, which ones you think are important, and then you can provide comments as well in there. So it's a really good way to kind of get more community input on this topic and spread the word about it more as well. That's part of the goal of the process is to get these things out there. And let's share that on social media, too, again, to just get input on the 10 projects and to get word out about the projects themselves. To the the community input portion for this is open through this Friday, the 22nd. So if you want to provide input, do it before then. And this is, you know, this is one of the type of things that is exactly what we hoped would come out of the Dream Big Tiffin Initiative, bringing things like this to the surface and then, you know, assisting the city in prioritizing, you know, what are the most important needs of the community at this time? And, you know, the list that we're going to come out of with this is going to be, you know, given as a as a recommendation, as, you know, a piece of information that will be helpful to the city as they make decisions. And so, you know, we think it's highly likely that, you know, this project will be get a lot of good community input and will, you know, rise to the top as one of the, you know, biggest projects out of the process. And, you know, at that point, the way the process is designed to work, if it is determined as a top priority project, and then we bring it to the to the city as part of the list, you know, T sub as the, you know, community development kind of partner of the city, we will then help you make that happen. However, that, you know, needs to work, whether that's applying for grants, whether that is looking at this for a community development, CBPG block grant, or, you know, however, the city decides is best to proceed. Myself and T sub will help support that through community development through that process. So just wanted to say that we'll support it that way through kind of the community development initiative. And we our office is, you know, trying to support this project in any way that we can as well. You know, attending meetings and Nick and I are supporting as far as, you know, property and zoning and, you know, any all those type of things that we're supporting any way that we can as well. So in summary, don't forget, the community input is open till through this Friday to, you know, help have people help us decide which projects are important. And as they pointed out tonight, this project's very important. So go on there again, dreambigtiffin.com and show show your support or your thoughts for any of the projects. Again, there were 10 submitted, so pretty simple to look through them. Yeah, all right. So if you have any questions for T sub on, you know, how we can help support this project or any of the other projects, you all know how to get ahold of me or you can work through the mayor. And don't forget to get involved in the community input process. Do you have any questions for me?
Councilman Gillig.
Thank you, Audrey. I've looked at the projects and some phenomenal ones for Dream Big Tiffin. Would you mind? And you may have already done this, but would you mind just just kind of explaining, you know, how this is going to play out with whatever projects are chosen?
Yeah, sure, absolutely. So this is the, you know, this is going to be an annual process and we're in the first cycle of this. So we launched it. The first kind of part of the process launched late last fall. That was where we were soliciting these ideas from the community. You know, we did our very best to get the word out there, but this is the very first year. So it was, you know, kind of new to people and everything. And people could either submit a full project proposal for something like this where the council has thought it through. They have a budget, they have a plan, you know, they're working on it. So that's a project proposal. People also submit ideas which are, you know, I think we should plant a tree on my street, that type of thing. And so once all of those projects were submitted, we kind of processed all that information, did some work on that. And just as a reminder, there is the Community Development Committee, which is the group that is helping to facilitate this process, which includes many of the city leaders, community leaders, business leaders, all kinds of people on that committee. Then so the committee then, you know, had some discussion and then we put the information together. Then we put all this information online, which is what you were looking at, Ben. And so now we're gathering community input on, okay, here were the projects that were submitted. Now, you know, how does the community feel about them? Do they support them? What do they have about them? Which ones do we feel are, you know, important? And then the committee is going to meet next week, actually, the different panels for the different types of projects. There's quality of life, health and human services, and education and training. So those smaller groups will have really in-depth conversations about these projects and determine based on their discussion and all the information available, as well as the data from this community input that we're gathering. They'll decide whether these projects are top priority projects, whether they're, you know, kind of they're recommended, but they're, you know, kind of middle level or they're just reviewed projects, you know, they're not, they're not really a priority. And so the the smaller group panels will discuss that. And then the larger community development committee comes back together early February and they will determine the final recommended list. We will then have that list of, you know, all the projects and the ones will be really focused on are the ones that were rated as top priority projects. And then we will be presenting those to to you all, to all of our elected officials, government officials for the city of Tiffin, legislators, our state leaders and community funders, private funders, and all of those type of people. And basically say, you know, based on this, this, you know, annual process, community input, the leaders talking about this, here are the projects that we've decided are the priorities that really need to happen this year. And then we'll figure out how to make those happen. So myself, you know, T sub staff will sort of put, you know, put some leg behind those top projects to help make them happen. And then we're going to, you know, try to connect the people that can fund them, can can provide the resources, can provide, you know, volunteers to make those top projects happen as as best as possible. And then we start the process again next year and it'll be moved up a little earlier next year. But then, you know, we'll go through the same thing. What are the projects that are out there? Prioritize them and then try to get them done. So that's kind of a trying to keep that brief, but that's how the the process will work each year. So to your point, Ben, once this community input phase ends, it'll all that information will go back to the committee who will make those final decisions. Then it'll be about getting the information out there to the right people. And then it'll be about trying to make them happen, the ones that were ranked as top priority. Hopefully that answers your question. Are there any other questions?
Councilman Gillig.
Yes, thank you, Audrey. That was that was very helpful. So with with T sub's role, and let's just say, and I'm going to be quite honest, keep my fingers crossed that this initiative that we heard about tonight will be considered one of the top priorities. That would then T sub's role would be, I believe you mentioned this, to really look into grants and CBDG funds and and things of that nature. So we could be looking at potentially a lot more than say if we were just able to appropriate, and this is just a number out of thin air, you know, $10,000 towards the annual upkeep. Is that is that accurate or?
Um, yeah, so just, yes, that's true. But just to clarify a little bit, so the the projects that are ranked as top priorities, our office is going to try to support them, you know, however we can, whether that's connecting with, you know, other kind of outside grants, foundations, helping them do crowdfunding, you know, whatever that takes, connecting them to the right resources, helping facilitate projects. You know, as the top ranked project. As far as specifically anything that's related to the city, anything that will go through the city or be related directly to city funds, we're just going to be presenting those top ranked projects to you all, to council and to, you know, the administration as, you know, a as a recommendation. Here we did this process, we gather this data, this is what we found, now it's up to you. So, you know, we wouldn't, T sub is not going to make the decision to go after CBPG or any city specific funds without you all, you know, directing us to do that. So we'll be bringing the projects through whatever means, you know, we and the community has available. But for city funds, this this process is still just a tool for you all, a recommendation, you know, sort of helping you getting data to you all to help you make that decision. So it would be up to you all if you, you know, kind of direct T sub, hey, we want you to go after grants through the city for this on behalf of this. We want you to to use this as a top CBPG priority for the next round, you know, so anything that's city specific funds, we would wait for your guidance on that regardless of what the list says. And, you know, kind of vice versa on that, even if the process doesn't turn, say, this project, the homeless shelter project as a top project, which I think that it will, Ben, but if it doesn't, the city could still, you know, direct T sub, hey, we want, you know, you to to, you know, assist us using city resources for this. So, you know, we're just here to support you as your community development partner in that way. So hopefully that clarified.
Oh, absolutely. That'll be wonderful to have T sub's expertise in in assisting with this. Thank you, Audrey.
Okay, anyone else for Audrey? Okay, well, Audrey, we appreciate that update. That's one item I can cross off my list. Just encourage all of you on council, members of the public to go to go to the website, which is dreambigtiffin.com. The deadline is this Friday, as Audrey already mentioned, so please get on there. Provide your feedback. You know, we're literally here asking that we want feedback on these top 10 projects so that we can do our best to to make things happen. So dreambigtiffin.com before close of business on Friday. Thanks, Audrey. Okay, I apologize for the the length of the report, but I think that was tremendous information. So I will try to run through my mayor's report here as quickly as possible, may skip a few items that that aren't as relevant and we can hold them off to a future meeting. So current financial state of the city right now, we're halfway through the month of January. And revenue for January of 2021 versus January of 2020 is down approximately 40% to the tune of $223,000. We did have discussion this morning during our department head and project coordination meeting. And Kathy did provide some very good feedback with this. It's a few things we all know based off of what we've been hearing and what we've witnessed ourselves that the mail is extremely slow and behind right now. And because of that, Kathy did note that there were several companies that have not submitted their their income taxes yet. And by companies, we're not referring to specific companies in town. We're actually referring to large payroll companies that a lot of our facilities in Tiffin utilize to send out their income taxes and their payrolls to their employees. So these companies could have 10s, 20s, 30s of businesses that they're submitting income tax returns for. So I have a feeling that that's a large part of it because there's a lot of those that are still outstanding that were in last year at this time. And we all know the first month of the year and even the first quarter can be quite fickle as as it always depends on what day was the last day of the year. Last year, there's just a whole lot that goes into it. So we'll get a better handle on things as the year goes on, but there's absolutely no reason to panic yet. Through the pandemic, from the start of the pandemic, right around April 1st and the shutdown, we are down 5.9% of revenue, which is about $510,000 less than what we collected during that time period a year ago. To provide a very quick update on COVID-19 cases, approximately seven and a half percent of all Seneca County residents have now had a COVID-19 positive test. There are currently 431 active cases in Seneca County with 34 individuals that are hospitalized. Unfortunately, we are now up to 103 deaths. But a piece of good news, we've had 3,346 who have recovered from the virus. I know there's a couple of those recovered on this in this meeting right here. Yes. And then just to remind everyone, actually, gosh, with the hands going up, with almost a majority of those on the call. And to remind everyone, there is free COVID-19 testing tomorrow at the Seneca County Fairgrounds. It's 10 a.m. until 2 p.m. It is the PCR test. So it's that accurate PCR test, not the rapid test. So you will receive your results in approximately two to four days after you are tested tomorrow. I would highly encourage anyone who's planning to go to that to get there as early as possible. As the time is limited, the National Guard that leads the testing will only schedule for four hour time increments. So we are at the mercy of the National Guard. When they cut things off, it is cut off. I would encourage everyone to also, beyond registering or beyond showing up as early as possible, registering ahead of time, which you can do that at the Seneca County Emergency Management Association's website. It's just seneca county ema.org. Again, seneca county ema.org. And you just go to the section on COVID-19 and then click the link for testing and the page will pop right up that will allow you to register and then shows you exactly how you can get your texts or your test results. You can get them via text, a website, or you scan this QR code and it will bring things up. So somewhere around two to four days from that test tomorrow, you'll receive those test results. But as I mentioned, because we know what's going to happen based off other communities, you can't expect to show up at the very end of the day and just walk right in. When the National Guard decides they're leaving, they're leaving. And we are literally at their mercy for this. So please get there early. Good news, T sub and the city recently reported that there were 186 businesses that we were able to help through the Tiffin Cares and the Seneca Cares Small Business Grant Relief Program. There was $1.2 million worth of funds distributed to these 186 businesses in Seneca County. And the stories that we have heard from businesses located here in Tiffin, just grateful and so thankful that they were able to receive this, the money to able to continue to keep their doors open, their employees employed. Really was just heartwarming to hear a lot of the stories from them. And and certainly if there's another round of a new cares act or something that passes in Congress and it gives us the ability to do so, we'll likely offer additional rounds of grants to businesses because we know they hear it. We're hearing their stories. Breaks my heart hearing a lot of our our business owners in the community talking about their struggles right now. Whether it's a restaurant, whether it's a bar, whether it's a small family owned commercial retail establishment, they're struggling, they need help. They need all of us here in Tiffin and in Seneca County to continue to go in and patronize their business, shop, eat, et cetera. Because they need your money if we're ever going to keep them open and not lose that vibrancy that the Tiffin community has has fought so hard for over the last several years. I do want to also remind business owners that a new round of PPP funding is available. That's the Paytech Protection Program. So any business who followed through and applied the first go around can apply once again for that PPP money. So I would encourage business owners, small business owners especially who are struggling, to please apply for the PPP dollars. T sub can assist you with that. They they worked hard at it last time. They have information on their website and an upcoming webinar. Take advantage of it. It is your tax money coming back to you to help you through these difficult times. So please take advantage of the PPP program that is now available. I do want to congratulate Amy Reinhardt, our entire downtown development team, and really everyone who's a part of downtown Tiffin. We have achieved now for the fifth year running Main Street accreditation, which is just tremendous news. You know, Tiffin has tried to become a part of the Main Street program since the year it was created in the 70s. And Tiffin was never successful. We came close many times and never were successful. But thankfully, five years ago, due to a lot on the efforts by Amy Reinhardt, our team of volunteers and also the city administration, we finally achieved that elusive Main Street status that we've been searching for for about 40 years. And we are very pleased to announce that we achieved national Main Street accreditation for the fifth consecutive year. So just very good news as we continue to develop downtown Tiffin. So thank you, Amy, and her team for all of their work that they have done. Uh, I want to applaud Ball Rikes for investing another $175,000 into their Tiffin manufacturing facility. Part of that was a $25,000 grant that they received from the state of Ohio at Jobs, Ohio. It's just good news. You know, Ball Rikes has been a very longstanding Tiffin, uh, manufacturer. And to see them continue to invest in our community, even in a year where things have been a heck of a struggle. It's just a very good sign that things are strong at Ball Rikes and they're continuing to progress. Tiffin Fire and Rescue Division, uh, interim chief Rob Chapel, uh, informed me today that they completed the final walkthrough for the new Circle K facility that is located on West Market Street. And he told me that, uh, we should be able to expect their opening soon. They passed, uh, the walkthrough. So very good news, uh, for the new Circle K in the west end of town. I would also like to publicly thank the Willows of Tiffin. Uh, they allowed the Tiffin Fire and Rescue Division. To use their ponds that are on site for ice and water rescue training. I, I remarked to Chief Chapel when he was telling me about this, that, uh, I, I didn't realize this winter with how warm it's been that we had a period of time that was cold enough to, uh, to go out and perform water and ice rescues. But, uh, he said, yes, that we actually had a short spell there that they, the fire rescue division were able to get out. And, uh, actually take part in it. He showed us some, some neat pictures of them using the various contraptions and. Plans to include that on his update to city council when he goes in a few months with his annual report to you all. But thank you to the Willows for allowing us to use those ponds for training purposes. Something that they hope they never use, but on occasion, unfortunately, we do have issues with either water and or ice rescues. Uh, already talked about the dream big Tiffin initiative. Uh, I also want to, uh, give public kudos to Matt Watson. I'm sure most of you, if not all of you have seen the op eds he's recently had, uh, in the Seneca News Daily and other locations, uh, offering insight to the public. On upcoming road and bridge projects and also helping lay out the future plans so that the taxpayers are able to see that those road and bridge levy funds are being used for exactly what it was intended. And promise. And, uh, I think it just shows the success of the levy of how many roads we've been able to pave last year that we're paving this year. And also how Matt and his team at the engineers office have been able to really. Double, if not triple, the amount of grant money that they've been able to bring in because they have an all time high. Paving dollars. So, um, you know, it's hard to believe that in one year we are, this year, we're going to see Melmore Street. All the way through, uh, North Washington and even some of Sandusky Street all repaved. In one calendar year, and that's on top of our regular street paving program in the various neighborhoods. So. Just a home run. Thank you, Matt, for all of your hard work on the levy, on the op eds, and of course, in the office, uh, developing these plans. Tiffin Parks and Recreation Department, uh, has decided to, uh, update their website and technology. And one of the new items that, uh, will save Kathy and her team some time is they're moving all of our shelter rentals onto an online form for the public to be able to. Apply for shelter rentals on there. The old process folks had to come into the finance office and. And go through the whole rigmarole. So now they'll be able to take care of things, uh, online by simply filling out a form. It's going to make Kathy and Michelle and the ladies in the finance office, their lives much easier, uh, to, to handle and deal with. I would like to welcome, uh, some new staff here at city hall. Uh, first off, we have Christopher Perry. Who is, uh, the newest member of the Tiffin Police Department. We also have finance tech Laura Young, who obviously is a finance tech in the finance office. And Damian Cisco, who is now at Public Works. So those three new hires all began within about the last week. And the city engineers office is sifting through, uh, what I'm told is more than 50 applicants for their open position. And they plan to interview the top six applicants here in the near future, uh, and move towards getting a hire in that office as well. Just a couple of other items, Mr. President. Uh, the common areas of city hall have all been repainted. As well as all of our marble cleaned, uh, for what we believe is the first time in several decades. It's amazing the difference. The council members will recognize when they, uh, when they come in here. Uh, as well as members of the public, it's, it's tremendous. The difference that it has made with the marble especially. How filthy and dirty it had gotten over the years from whether it was items being taped to it to hang announcements up. Or even just hands and other things on the marble. Night and day difference. It looks like brand new marble in the hallways, uh, and just the, the paint, which is of course very cheap to, to get. In the hallways, the building, it just looks so much better. And, um, it just goes to show that, that we are taking care of our facilities as well here at city hall. Because the last thing we want to do is have a situation like the county did with their courthouse. It's all about making sure that we are maintaining the assets that we have. So we're never in a position. Where we are having to come up with an entire new building because it was poorly maintained for decades and decades. We're committed to taking care of our city facilities, uh, here at the city of Tiffin. I also want to thank the Tiffin Seneca Martin Luther King Junior Committee and Tiffany University for the wonderful virtual celebration that was held last night. The video has been posted to YouTube for anyone that wishes to watch it. The links have been shared on social media. And, uh, that actually concludes my report.
Councilman Perry.
So I just, um, received a text and said, um, Zach Perkins actually won the seat. So I know we've been probably filibustering a lot tonight, so, um, we might be able to get him or, uh, Mr. Leopard. Into our meeting. So we don't have to have one later this week. So just wanted to kind of throw that out there.
Councilwoman Yana Tuno.
Mr. President, uh, Mr. Mayor, I, I hate to ask you this question. I just saw this at 5:53. That's when I got my newspaper. And so I'm like, oh, great. It's coming this late. So anyhow, you had mentioned the shortfall from 2020 to 2021. I saw in there the ABR is looking at two to three, um, side enhancement grants. Did we see it on or should we brakes on just a little, see how this shakes out? Because the news I've been hearing again is feedback like COVID is going to ramp up even more. I don't know if that's going to hurt us and. I don't know. I was just a little concerned when I read that. Um, I agree with the project, you know, I have no problem with the side enhancement program. I'm just wondering if we need to play a little, it's a question.
Sure, that's a, that's a fair question. Um, that's why we are monitoring things on, like I said, on a daily basis with our next returns. We do not believe we're in a position yet where we need to eliminate that program or at least pump the brakes on it. However. If the time comes that we feel adjustments need to be made on a reduction basis on the city budget. We certainly, the facade enhancement program will be one of the first, if not the first program that is paused. But for right now, uh, me and the team here do not feel we're in a position where we need to, uh, to take that into consideration. At least that is our opinion.
I just talked to, uh, Councilman Leopard. He's on his way home. He's going to call in as soon as he gets home. So we need to. Do you have anything else you want to bring up, Mayor? Now's the time to do it.
Well, we were in mid-conversation here, so I was just finishing up a reply to Councilwoman Yana Tuno. So I'm not sure if she had anything to comment back or if that answer, uh, sufficed.
Anyone else have any questions for the mayor? Councilman Gilli.
Well, the mayor did say I, I could bring these up if we had to stall for time. So. Like you mentioned, the wonderful investment that Ball Rikes potato chips is putting into their new manufacturing equipment. And they just happened to be our featured fun facts in, uh, history class on Thursday. And when they started in 1920, uh, it was a dirt floor garage on Ohio Avenue. And it took all day, uh, to cook 14 pounds of potato chips. And it was done, um, in a copper kettle, uh, that was, you know, heated by wood burning. So. They've come, uh, quite some ways, I would say. I'm actually still, uh, I don't know if Bryce is still on there. I'm still trying to get an answer on. You know, how many pounds of potato chips are, are processed that they're at that wonderful facility on a daily basis. So that'd be kind of a cool, you know, starts out with 14 pounds and now it's, you know, whatever it might be.
I can remember I used to be able to buy nickel bags of ball rights.
I have one of those old nickel bags. Alright, so yeah. No chips in it though sadly.
Councilman Perry.
One thing I did want to bring up at some point and now might be a great time. I see under some of the bioducts and some of the bridges, um, there's quite a bit of, um, logs and, and stuff, uh, gathering there. I didn't know what the city's plan was for that or if we're planning to address that at some point.
Mayor.
Yeah, I guess it's very difficult because as we've discussed in the past and we've talked, uh, the issue has come up. I have, I, I don't know if I've ever asked Matt Watson about it, but I know I've discussed it with, uh, Mario and also previous engineer, uh, before Mario. And they said that while it looks bad, it actually causes no issues with the bridge and water flow, et cetera. But also the issues that Mike Hoffman used to talk about at Public Works was. They're not really allowed to get down in the river and use any kind of either diesel gas or, or oil type of equipment, which really limits our ability to. Remove those huge logs that are down there because we're not supposed to have gas, diesel, et cetera, operated equipment. Well. What are you going to use to remove logs of that size in the middle of a river? So. It can actually get quite expensive with, with cleaning up of the river and whatnot to remove it. So a lot of the times we've just relied on mother nature to take its course. But we can always look and see if there are other options out there without costing an arm and a leg, but, uh. I guess that's the short answer. I don't know if, if there's anything else that, that Dale's been told or has heard, but it's. I guess it's something that looks ugly, but you, you really don't notice unless you're looking over the side of the river wall or the bridge and it's not causing damage. So it's hard to justify spending a lot of money to, to clean something like that.
Dale.
The Ohio Department of Natural Resources does have control of the river. We do annually do a river cleanup in the fall. It's a coalition of people who, um, attempt to clean up along the river. But they don't have the equipment or the ability to address what your concern is, Councilman Perry, the large logs. That build up there. So it is problematic, but as the mayor stated, uh, we don't believe that there is any damage being caused to the river wall as a result of it. It's just kind of ugly and river, the river does get taken care of by nature eventually and it washes downstream. Ends up in Fremont, I guess. I'm not sure where it goes, uh, and then goes on, but, uh. It's, it's been like that for years. It continues to, to be, uh, perhaps an eyesore, but, but not a danger.
Councilman Perry.
Another, um, little idea I wanted to bring up and, uh, wanted to see what you guys would think. I thought it'd be kind of cool to put like, uh, LED lights under the bridges. You know, a, at least downtown. I think that would just add like kind of a cool little element, um, for, for a cheap price. I've seen other, uh, cities do it. Um, and it looks pretty cool. So just something to think about.
Yeah, we, we actually explored that, uh, a few years back, Danny. Um, was a. Neat idea, um, and, and we came up with the cost and it was. A lot more expensive than you would expect that we came up with. So. And then we started looking at it because actually I was on the committee that looked at it myself and, uh, Councilman Shuff, who's now a commissioner were on it. And we thought it was extremely neat idea until we got the, the cost of it. And then we started saying, okay, well, what if we fundraise? Well, then we started looking and also realized that you can't really see underneath any of the bridges until you're walking. Like if you're driving in a car looking, you can barely see any of the bridges because of the ornate. It's not called railing, but whatever the, the, the wall basically on the side of the bridge. So. At the end of the day, Tyler and I just both, while we thought it was really cool, kind of dropped the idea and thought if anything, it would actually make more sense to light the walls themselves up. Versus underneath the bridge, um, because a lot of the areas that when we started doing some research that light their bridges like that don't have quite the large walls and drop off like we do. It's easier to see up underneath them. Um, so then we looked at the option of lighting river walls and. We even got the company that let the justice center up, uh, to, to help with some quotes and it was pretty high. I'll have to see if we still have it down at T sub. It was one of the downtown committees. But unfortunately, it was one of those things that just, as cool as it looked, we couldn't justify spending that kind of city funds on it. But if there was ever an effort to fundraise, uh, then it could be an option.
Have we heard anything from Councilman Leopard yet?
He's doing the most Tiffin thing you can do. He's waiting on a train.
Is that right?
Yep, he's waiting on a train. So, okay. I would expect he sent that message two minutes ago. So, uh, I'm going to assume he's probably over by Clinton Avenue really near his home. So.
Mr. President, I've got several things. Proceed.
Go ahead.
Okay. First, um, and I, I was not, um, in attendance for most of the committee, the whole meeting, but wanted to make sure that, um. Counsel understands that it would be appropriate to remove, um, ordinances 20 dash 130. And 20 dash 131 from the table this evening and have them read for the second time. The second item is that, um, you approved, uh, an ordinance that, um. Approved accepting sewer easement from property on Ella Street. The owners of, uh, the, the, um, the LLC signed that easement that I prepared. And, um, it was recorded this morning. So the city now has the, uh, the rights to, um. To access and maintain the sewer that's in place on, on that property. As you know, the, um, the Zeiss annexation is what I'll call it over on, um. I guess Euclid. Euclid Avenue. It, um, um, will become effective later this week. And I'm working, um, uh, with several people to make sure that that will be, uh, recorded properly, which is the, the kind of the final step. To record the transcript of proceedings, um, in the recorder's office and also to notify. Particular public offices that need to know, such as Secretary of State's Office, Board of Elections, the County Auditor's Office. So that will be done here in the next couple of weeks now that the ordinance will become effective. The Charter Review Commission is meeting again next week, next Wednesday. Via Zoom at six o'clock. They, um, are going to continue the review of the charter. They are currently, um. In the middle of, um, section six, which deals with, uh, the various departments of the city. So they will probably finish section six and then move to section seven, which discusses, uh, various boards and commissions. Uh, of the city. So, um, um, that will be on their agenda and, uh, you are, um, welcome to attend. By Zoom, um, you, the general public also is able to attend that meeting. It is a public meeting. And to let you know that the commission has, um, at several their meetings have made some, um, very small changes. To so far, uh, to the, the, uh, charter. And those will be part of a recommendation to city council that will be made, um, probably late spring. They will be sent, uh, in a report and those will come, just to remind you of the process. The report of the Charter Review Commission is a recommendation based on their work and the public input. And they will submit this to city council and then by charter, it's city councils. It's their decision as to which issue should be presented to the voters in, in the fall. And so you will pass then legislation that will, um, uh, place those items. Um, and there might be several, um, items, questions, and there will be, uh, uh, they will be combined based on the subject matter. And, uh, so that's the, the process and then they will be submitted to, uh, to the voters. Um, and uh, so that's the the process and then they will be submitted to uh to the voters in the fall. Um, another item I wanted to bring up for this evening is you'll see in your package, you have ordinance twenty-one dash five. And um twenty-one dash five, it involves the uh, the project that is fully funded by a grant or a couple of grants, the um electric vehicle uh charging stations. Uh, you may um have driven by a parking lot seven or in parking lot seven and you see uh the work that's been going on for the last um three weeks or so. Um, what this ordinance does is that really for audit purposes, it um confirms that you as council, you approved the contract, the authorization to proceed is what uh the the title of the document for the 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 work to be done. And and when I say work, it's a combination of uh various um um items. Um, it was a professional engineering uh contract um that was a part of the grant process for the um um uh that was submitted to AEP. You know, you may recall that um this project was again fully funded um at the beginning by AEP. Um, it was a grant that was submit, application that was submitted and it was awarded to the city. Um, there was a little additional funds that were needed and uh Tiffin Community Foundation provided also uh grant funding. But as a part of the grant process, we um, um, we needed to identify a professional engineering firm that um um had the expertise to be able to design um, you know, this kind of unique um special um 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 facility. And um, um, they, this company that is mentioned in the ordinance, um ABM um Electrical Power Solutions LLC, they were identified as a uh, a professional design engineering firm that could provide all the expertise. And that includes designing it, um providing the actual um charging station units and also the installation of the units as they're being, you see they're being constructed now um in Lot Seven. Prior legislation, uh the initial one granted the mayor the authority to sign any and all grant related documents to receive the grant. And included in that really was this uh authorization to proceed with ABM. However, as we're living through this process now, it is my judgment and my recommendation to city council that um uh we confirm the authority that the mayor has to sign this um authorization to pro- proceed. Um, this is a professional uh services contract. It's not something in my opinion that needs to be competitively bid because that's uh the law in Ohio that when you hire a professional for their services, you don't need to uh bid that um uh that type of contract. But I think that this ordinance is helpful for any review of this this um grant uh that we received. You know that this is, and I somewhat apologize to you because this grant has now um four ordinances. It started out with the ordinance to um receive the grant and amend the art, amend the budget to provide appropriate the money for the grant. Um, we also then had um an additional ordinance to amend the budget to appropriate the additional eight thousand dollars that was granted by um uh Tiffin Community Foundation. Then later, as the project became more real, we uh realized that um that we needed uh to um grant um an easement to AEP to provide electric service to the location. The location has kind of moved around a little bit until it was determined, you know, where it is currently being being installed. Then as we're working through it again, we feel that this ordinance um is is necessary to kind of complete the the authorization for the project. Again, I remind you that this was one hundred percent funded um by outside city funds. Um, and um, we're trying to get the this completed as soon as possible because there are cer- certain limitations, time limitations on the grant. Um, if possible, would like to have the ordinance um suspended uh this evening if um we have uh Councilman Leopard join us. However, it it may not absolutely be necessary if it's read at another meeting. Um, and then suspended or even thr- three readings, uh it would still be part of the record for the grant. So I think that that would be uh would be suitable. So um, I wanted to explain that and give you some background um on why that was submitted. I had provided that information to uh Councilman Leopard. Um, and um, he understood and that's why he signed the ordinance to introduce it. And uh, it'll, it was before you this evening. Are there any questions about um ordinance twenty-one dash five?
Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm no electrician or professional electrical engineer. But a- as you explained it, I thought if the city could do it ourselves, we would save money, but this is a grant money. Any money's left over will go back to wherever it came from. So and I'm thinking it is as simple as hooking a couple of cables onto a battery and letting it charge and walk away from it, but evidently it's much bigger project than that. So that was my only.
Yeah, I would um, you know, add that uh I've watched this project um um transpire over the last several weeks and there's a lot more to it than what you just described, the Councilman Jones. Um, even the electric power feed, there's a transformer that uh was added. Uh, a new pole was added. So it is um, um, it is a much more elaborate, complex project than than most of us would think. So um, that's why it's um, and the fortunate thing is that um it is hundred percent funded by grant money. Um, I will also add, if there isn't anything else, and I see Councilman Leopard has now arrived at our meeting. Um, there's a comment about um, um, the person selected, Zach Perkins. He um, before he could join the meeting, um, there's probably a couple of things that need to happen. One, he would uh, the uh central committee needs to, in some way, formally convey who they uh selected. Um, what, and typically that is in writing, a letter form. And then also uh, uh, the Mr. Perkins would need to um take the oath of of office before he could actually act on any business as a uh, a council member. So um, um, it may not be appropriate for him to join us this evening as a council member because of those uh prerequisites, uh if you will. But I'm glad to see that um Councilman Leopard's here and um I've talked uh enough and slowly enough to to let that happen.
I I had a question for you, Brent. Um, if um, if you're unable to um call in for the um oh, I just went brain dead here, the Charter Review Commission. But you have a uh, you have a suggestion. How do you, how do you get that to them?
Yes, they have um a uh, an email address. It's Charter Review Commission at tiffinohio.gov.
Okay.
And as a part of their um agenda at every meeting, they will um, um, they will um read any emails that um, that they receive as uh kind of written electronic correspondence.
Thank you. All right. Let's see. Anything else for the mayor? That might be the longest report on history.
Uh.
It's only. Leopard is good to see you.
Good to be here.
Brent decided to filibuster.
All right. Uh, moving on, uh, reported the officers, uh, Councilman Ann Forrest.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Director of Finance Kathy Kaufman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have the report for December of twenty twenty. So our finances for December, receipts for the month were five million eighty-two thousand three hundred forty-eight dollars and twenty-eight cents. Expenses for the month were four million five hundred and one thousand six hundred and fifteen dollars and forty-three cents. General fund unencumbered balance was three million two hundred sixty-nine thousand seven hundred eleven dollars and six cents. Income tax receipts for December twenty twenty were nine hundred forty-seven thousand six hundred thirty-one dollars and sixteen cents. Comparing December of twenty twenty with December of twenty nineteen, uh, we were down thirty-four thousand five hundred seventy-three dollars and ten cents, which was not bad at all. And year to date, we were actually up point three three percent for the year. A portion of income tax receipts that was transferred into Fund Two Fifteen for Public Streets for December twenty twenty was one hundred seventeen thousand three hundred twelve dollars and forty-five cents. The unexpendable balance for all funds was twenty-seven million three hundred seventy-nine thousand six hundred twenty-seven dollars and fifty-two cents, which is the same as the bank balance for the same time period. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Are there any questions for uh the Finance Director? Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Councilman Leopard. I was gonna skip these, but I tried to be a man of my word. I said I'd bring them up. Um, I just want the public to know, I know the answers to these three questions because Finance Director Kaufman emailed me back, so I know the answers, but I think the public would like to know the answers, a handful of them listening in. Ask her what the difference between Fund Two Eleven, which is street maintenance, and Two Fifteen, which is a quarter percent roads and bridges. And I have her response here, but I'd be glad to let her answer that if she would.
Sure. Street Maintenance Fund is what funds our Public Works employees and any street maintenance items that we have. Uh, potholes, anything like that. Um, gang balls, traffic lights, salt, um maintenance, operations, snowplows, things like that. And Fund Two Fifteen is the tax levy that was passed by the voters for five years, which is for major repairs and reconstruction of roads and bridges.
Okay, thank you. And the reason that caught my eye is under Two Eleven, street maintenance, you just expounded on, there's six hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars in that fund. I just took for granted that was additional monies we could use to pave streets, but you explained that very well. Item two, I wanted to ask for the public's benefit. I know the answer is what is the woman victim assistance fund? There's two hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars in the woman victim assistance fund. And I had no idea what that was. And again, I want the public to know that city council is looking over the budget here.
So the uh Women's Victim Assistance was created due to a grant that was applied for by Judge Frederick Daniel. The funds are used to assist women who are victims of violent misdemeanor offenses by referring them to the Victim Assistance Program. It also provides victim advocates with use of office space, telephone, computer equipment, and other office supplies that helps them perform their duties effectively.
Okay, thank you.
If I can add to.
Law Director. Law Director.
You know, we um, the city uses um those funds to contract with the county uh Victims Advocate Office to provide uh victim advocate services for um, um people that are victims in municipal court cases. Um, we pay that office fifteen thousand dollars a year, which uh is a bargain. Um, what that provides is any victims of crime, of cases that involving misdemeanors in Tiffin um Foster Municipal Court. They have um the availability of receiving services from that office um to help them uh receive additional services outside of the court system. Make sure that they are fully informed and aware of the legal proceedings, um what rights they may have. Make sure that uh they uh understand each step. Um, also that they get information about uh possible outcomes of cases ahead of time and are able to provide input in those cases. So it's a valuable service to help victims of crime and we contract with the county for those services.
Thank you. And the last one might be the easiest of the three. What caught my eye again is what is the Oakley Park Trust Fund of twenty-nine thousand dollars? That's almost in my backyard and I have no idea what the, well, I do now, but Oakley Park Trust Fund of twenty-nine thousand dollars is.
And that was, uh, fund was created as a result of uh Fred Zarques leaving the city an apartment building in his last will and testament. And the net income from the apartment building was to be used to beautify and maintain Oakley Park. Um, the city sold the apartment building and so this fund was created with those proceeds. Proceeds have been used over the years to make, maintain and beautify Oakley Park as was intended.
Okay, thank you very much for answering those three.
Any other questions for uh Finance Director? Councilman Gilligan.
Uh, yes, Mr. President. Uh, fellow council members, we all received our email from Finance Director Kaufman on Wednesday, uh, January sixth. Um, to that end, I would like to ask for council's approval of the Finance Director's report in bank reconciliation.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second? Councilman Perry.
I'll second, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion, a second, and any other discussion? Seeing none, also, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you. Uh, Director of Law Brent T. Howard.
Um, I've already provided uh information um for my report.
You've done a great job. You've done a great job. Thank you. We're now under written communications.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have Finance Director's request for legislation number F twenty-one dash one to amend two thousand twenty-one budget ordinance twenty dash one twenty-two to appropriate funds into the police, fire, and park department budgets.
Finance Director's request uh for legislation F twenty-one dash one uh will be placed on file in the clerk's office. Uh, ordinance twenty-one dash four has been prepared for tonight's meeting.
Finance Director's request for legislation number F twenty-one dash two to amend the two thousand twenty-one budget ordinance twenty dash one twenty-two to appropriate funds in the Community Housing Improvement Program Administrative Expense Line.
Um, Finance Director's request for legislation F twenty-one dash two uh will be held on file in the clerk's office. Ordinance twenty-one dash three has been prepared for tonight's meeting.
Finance Director's request for legislation number F twenty-one dash three to amend the two thousand twenty-one budget ordinance twenty dash one twenty-two in order to allow a transfer from the Railroad Safety Escrow Fund to capital improvements and appropriate the funds.
Finance Director's request for legislation F twenty-one dash three will be held on file in the clerk's office. Ordinance twenty-one dash six has been prepared for tonight's meeting.
And Finance Director's request for legislation number F twenty-one dash four to amend the two thousand twenty-one budget ordinance twenty dash one twenty-two in order to increase expenses in unemployment insurance in the street department budget.
Finance Director's request for legislation F twenty-one dash four will be held on file in the clerk's office. Ordinance twenty-one dash eight has been prepared for tonight's meeting.
And then we have the Planning Commission's recommendation to council to approve ordinance twenty dash one thirty and ordinance twenty dash one thirty-one with its amended Exhibit A.
Planning Commission's letter of recommendation to approve these uh two ordinances, twenty dash one thirty and twenty dash one thirty-one will be held on file in the clerk's office.
And then I have uh Mayor's Letters of Appreciation to Phyllis Capocini for her donation of one hundred dollars to the Tiffin Police Department to be used towards equipment. To Merle Funston and Deanna Stock for their donation of fifty dollars to be used for Christmas. And to Tiffin Westgate Limited uh, to the Tiffin Police Department for their donation of five hundred dollars uh to that department. That concludes the written communications.
Thank you. We're now under oral communications. Anyone wishing to address console uh may do so by uh signing in and pushing the button. The mayor will uh bring you in to our meeting.
Yes, uh, we do still have a few individuals, uh, who are, uh, in our attendee list, uh, with the long meeting tonight. If there is anyone that wishes to address Council now at this time, uh, please use the raise hand function and we'll let you in. Only a couple of them, but give them a couple of minutes here. Okay, well, I, uh, I do not see any hands, Mr. President, so, uh, we'll consider that closed.
Okay, thank you. We'll now move ahead to motions. Councilwoman Boyle?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to make a motion to remove Ordinance Twenty dash one thirty from the table.
We have a mo- uh, a motion to remove, uh, one, ordinance one twenty dash one thirty from the table. Is there a second? Councilwoman Yanatuno?
Second, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to remove, uh, legislation from the table. Um, is there any discussion? Uh, Clerk will take the vote, please.
Councilman Leopard?
Yes.
Councilman Perry?
Yes.
Councilwoman Boyle?
Yes.
Councilman Gillig?
Yes.
Councilwoman Yanatuno? Councilman Jones?
Yes.
Ordinance Twenty dash one thirty is removed from the table with a vote of six to zero. Councilwoman Boyle?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to make a motion to remove Ordinance Twenty dash one thirty-one from the table.
Thank you. We have a motion to remove ordinance twenty dash one thirty-one from the table. Is there a second? Councilman, uh, Councilman Perry?
I'll second, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilman Leopard?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Boyle?
Yes.
Gillig?
Yes.
Yanatuno?
Yes.
And Jones?
Yes.
Ordinance Twenty dash one thirty-one is, uh, removed from the table with a vote of six to zero. We are now under resolutions.
Resolution number twenty-one dash three introduced by Bridget Boyle, resolution authorizing the sale in calendar year two thousand twenty-one of municipally-owned personal property which is not needed for public use or which is obsolete or unfit for the use for which it was acquired by Internet auction pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section seven twenty-one point fifteen D and declaring an emergency.
This is the second reading of Resolution Twenty-One dash three.
Ordinance number twenty dash one thirty introduced by Bridget Boyle. Ordinance zoning approximately six point three-three acres of land owned by Hedge Kick Condominiums Association in the fourth ward of the city as zone R four, multiple-family residential district compatible with adjacent land use and meeting requirements of Tiffin City Charter and modified ordinances.
This is the second reading, ordinance twenty dash one thirty.
Mr. President? Mr. President?
Yes.
If I may, um, you may recall at the public hearing, uh, joint public hearing with the Planning Commission at the last meeting, and then also as a part of, um, ordinance, um, uh, the Planning Commission's written recommendation, they, um, they, uh, have requested that the Exhibit A to ordinance twenty dash one thirty-one be, um, uh, be amended with a complete description of the five point three-five-two acres. I don't believe that that is in your packet yet, and I apologize. But what I, I will have that for, um, for, uh, Council at their next meeting. And so I would ask that at the next meeting, you amend it before voting on passage uh, to, uh, substitute with the correct, uh, complete legal description, um, of the area to be zoned.
Okay, will do.
Make a note of that. Okay. Ordinance number twenty dash one thirty-one introduced by Bridget Boyle. Ordinance zoning approximately five point three-five-two acres of land owned by the Fox Republic Living Trust dated December ninth, two thousand eight, Russell J. Fox and Beverly K. Fox granters and Russell J. Fox and/or Beverly K. Fox trustees in the first ward of the city of Tiffin as zone M dash two heavy industrial district compatible with adjacent land use and meeting requirements of Tiffin City Charter and modified ordinances.
This is the second reading of ordinance twenty dash one thirty-one. Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess it's easy for me to get confused that we're talking about twenty dash one thirty-one. And Law Director Howard talked about Exhibit A, and I have Exhibit A here under one thirty-one. And maybe I was trying to listen to what he was saying, but if I have it,
Uh, Law Director?
I need a new one.
Yeah, um, the, the original, um, Exhibit A to that ordinance, um, it only described, uh, a four, it described a four-plus acre parcel. It did not describe the entire area to be zoned. What it, uh, omitted was the, um, the public right of wa- way that, um, was just to, it gets to the south of that property. So it needs to be, um, included, um, the entire, um, five-plus acres. Uh, we discussed this at the joint public hearing. Um, the Planning Commission, then, when they met, they accepted that that, um, the, the ordinance needed the, uh, revised Exhibit A, and, uh, that will be, um, submitted, uh, to Council at its next meeting. So as I said, you would, uh, would suggest that you amend, uh, ordinance twenty dash one thirty-one with the revised complete description of the five point, uh, three-five-two acres.
Thank you.
Ordinance number twenty dash one thirty-nine introduced by Daniel Perry. Ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept a permanent easement from Imperatorum LLC on two fifty-eight progress Parkway for storm sewer purposes and declaring an emergency.
This is the third reading, ordinance twenty dash one thirty-nine. Councilman Perry?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I would like for immediate passage of ordinance twenty dash one thirty-nine.
We have a motion for immediate passage of ordinance twenty dash one thirty-nine. Is there a second? Councilwoman Boyle?
I'll second, Mr. President.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote on the emergency.
Councilman Leopard?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Boyle?
Yes.
Gillig?
Yes.
Yanatuno?
Yes.
And Jones?
Yes.
The emergency passes with a vote of six to zero. We will now vote on the passage of ordinance twenty dash one thirty-nine.
Councilman Leopard?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Boyle?
Yes.
Gillig?
Yes.
Yanatuno?
Yes.
And Jones?
Yes.
Order Twenty dash one thirty-nine passes with a vote of six to zero.
Ordinance number twenty dash one forty-one introduced by Ben Gillig. Ordinance approving an agreement with the Ohio Attorney General's Office for the collection of delinquent pets owed to the city and authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement.
This is the third reading, ordinance twenty dash one forty-one. Councilman Gillig?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to ask for passage of ordinance twenty dash one forty-one.
We have a motion for passage of ordinance twenty dash one forty-one. Is there a second? Councilwoman Yanatuno?
I'll second, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilman Gillig?
Just very briefly, this is a tremendous deal for the city. It is a free service provided by the Ohio Attorney General's Office, and, uh, I commend the Finance Director and our Tax Commissioner for, uh, discovering this. It'll, it'll, we certainly won't make any less money, and it will free up, uh, our wonderful Finance Department to do, uh, some other things.
Thank you. Any other comments? Clerk will call the vote, please. On the passage.
Yeah, okay. Councilman Leopard?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Boyle?
Yes.
Gillig?
Yes.
Yanatuno?
Yes.
And Jones? Councilman Jones?
Yes.
Order Twenty dash one forty-one passes with a vote of six to zero.
Ordinance number twenty-one dash three introduced by Ben Gillig. Ordinance amending two thousand twenty-one Budget Ordinance twenty dash one twenty-two to appropriate three thousand, three hundred fifty-five dollars in the Community Housing Improvement Program Administrative Expense Line.
This is the first reading of ordinance twenty dash one three. Councilman Gillig?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask for suspension of Council's three-reading rule and immediate passage of ordinance twenty-one dash three.
We have a motion to suspend the three-reading rule, ordinance twenty-one dash three, and immediate passage. Is there a second? Councilwoman Boyle?
Yes, I will second that, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilman Gillig?
Well, we lost Councilman Perry here, so, uh, might need to stall for a bit. Kathy, could you please, uh, I believe you covered it in Committee of the Whole. Could you please explain why it will behoove us to suspend this three-reading rule?
Sure. Uh, this is for, we need to appropriate some money in the budget because we received an invoice from Fostoria for our community housing program. It's for administrative services and fees that we pay for. And it is actually for November twenty twenty, and we did not receive the invoice until January of twenty twenty-one, and the invoice is due January twenty-second. So, um, there was no money in the budget for twenty twenty-one, and so we need to appropriate it now.
Mayor, can you see what happened to Dan?
Yeah, he just messaged me and, uh, his, his, uh, small child just went over and unplugged the Wi-Fi accidentally. So he's rebooting it now. So, uh, yep, I guess we had a, an unidentified, uh, well, it's not flying, so an unidentified crawling object that, uh, disconnected his Wi-Fi getting in the business, city government. Sorry, I don't want to get you laughing, Council President. I want you to have a coughing fit. We can't lose you.
Thought maybe the dog ate his homework.
That would be suitable for Danny.
Actually, my mother too, and she was teaching first grade. Our dog ate her lesson plans, and she had to go in and tell the principal that, I don't have my lesson plans for today.
Well, my best kid story, my youngest son, Tim, when he was three years old, drove, drove a golf cart through a Ferrari.
Oh, shit.
Five thousand dollars damage. More to it than that. Ah, there he is. Okay, where were we? Okay, we have the, um, we have motion and a second. We're under discussion, right? All right, is there any discussion on, uh, ordinance twenty-one dash three? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the vote on the suspension, please.
Okay, Councilman Leopard?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Boyle?
Yes.
Gillig?
Yes.
Yanatuno?
Yes.
And Jones?
Yes.
The suspension passes with a vote of six to zero. We will now vote on the passage.
Councilman Leopard?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Boyle?
Yes.
Gillig?
Yes.
Yanatuno?
Yes.
And Jones?
Yes.
Order Twenty-one dash three passes with a vote of six to zero.
Ordinance number twenty-one dash four introduced by Ben Gillig. Ordinance amending two thousand twenty-one Budget Ordinance twenty dash one twenty-two to appropriate funds into the police, fire, and park department budgets for donations and reimbursements received.
This is the first reading of ordinance twenty-one dash four. Councilman Gillig?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. So that we can put these generous donations to work, immediately, I would like to request suspension of Council's three-reading rule and immediate passage of ordinance, uh, twenty-one dash four, please.
All right, we have a motion to, uh, suspend, uh, the three-reading rule in immediate passage of ordinance twenty-one dash four. Is there a second? Councilwoman Boyle?
I'll second that, Mr. President.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the vote on the suspension, please.
Councilman Leopard?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Boyle?
Yes.
Gillig?
Yes.
Yanatuno?
Yes.
And Jones?
Yes.
The suspension, the suspension passes with a vote of six to zero. Now, we will now vote on the passage.
Councilman Leopard?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Boyle?
Yes.
Gillig?
Yes.
Yanatuno?
Yes.
And Jones?
Yes.
Order Twenty-one dash four passes with a vote of six to zero.
Ordinance number twenty-one dash five introduced by Steve Leopard. Ordinance approving an authorization to proceed and contract with ABM Electrical Power Solutions LLC for engineering services to provide, design, and install two electric vehicle charging stations in the city's downtown parking lot number seven and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of ordinance twenty-one dash five. Councilman Leopard?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I would ask for suspension of City Council's three-reading rule and passage of ordinance number twenty-one dash five.
We have a motion to suspend the three-reading rule and immediate passage of ordinance twenty-one dash five. Is there a second? Councilwoman Yanatuno?
I'll second, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the vote on the suspension, please.
Councilman Leopard?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Boyle?
Yes.
Gillig?
Yes.
Yanatuno?
Yes.
And Jones?
Yes.
The suspension passes with a vote of six to zero. We will now vote on the emergency.
Councilman Leopard?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Boyle?
Yes.
Gillig?
Yes.
Yanatuno?
Yes.
And Jones?
Yes.
The emergency passes with a vote of six to zero. We will now vote on the passage.
Councilman Leopard?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Boyle?
Yes.
Gillig?
Yes.
Yanatuno?
Yes.
And Jones?
Yes.
Order Twenty-one dash five passes with a vote of six to zero.
Ordinance number twenty-one dash six introduced by Ben Gillig. Ordinance amending two thousand twenty-one Budget Ordinance twenty dash one twenty-two for a transfer from the Railroad Safety Escrow Fund to the Capital Improvement Fund. Appropriate the funds for the Railroad Safety Improvement Project and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of ordinance twenty-one dash six. Uh, Councilman Gillig?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I would like to ask for suspension of Council's three-reading rule and immediate passage of ordinance twenty-one dash six.
We have a motion to, to suspend the three-reading rule and, uh, immediate passage of ordinance twenty-one dash six. Is there a second? Councilman Perry?
I'll second, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the vote on the emergency, or on the suspension, please.
Councilman Leopard?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Boyle?
Yes.
Gillig?
Yes.
Yanatuno?
Yes.
And Jones?
Yes.
The suspension passes with a vote of six to zero. We will now vote on the emergency.
Councilman Leopard?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Boyle?
Yes.
Gillig?
Yes.
Yanatuno?
Yes.
And Jones?
Yes.
Emergency pass with a vote of six to zero. We will now vote on the passage.
Councilman Leopard?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Boyle? Gillig?
Yes.
Yanatuno?
Yes.
And Jones?
Yes.
Order Twenty-one dash six passes with a vote of six to zero.
Ordinance twenty-one dash seven introduced by Ben Gillig. Ordinance amending two thousand twenty-one Budget Ordinance twenty dash one twenty-two to appropriate two thousand, three hundred sixty-two dollars in the mayor's budget for annual dues to the Ohio Municipal League.
This is the first reading of ordinance twenty-one dash seven. Councilman Gillig?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to ask for suspension of ordinance twenty-one, uh, excuse me, of, uh, Council's three-reading rule and immediate passage of ordinance twenty-one dash seven.
We have a motion to suspend the three-reading rule and, uh, immediate passage of ordinance twenty-one dash seven. Is there a second? Councilwoman Boyle?
Yes, I'll second, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilman Gillig?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I believe the- Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I believe the mayor did a phenomenal job outlining the benefits of the Ohio Municipal League, explaining the circumstances behind, uh, needing to add it to the budget, but, um, it sure sounds to me as though we are getting, uh, quite a bang for our buck for a relatively, uh, low price.
Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Councilman Gillig just mentioned a low price. I belong to a few organizations and clubs in my day, and our dues are thirty-five dollars a year or fifty dollars a year, and the two thousand three hundred and sixty-two, that's just standard for all communities to belong to the Ohio Municipal League. Is that a correct statement?
Uh, no, it's based off of the population of your community.
Thank you.
Anyone else have a comment? Question? Okay. Seeing none, I'll ask the, uh, clerk to call the vote on the suspension.
Councilwoman, Councilwoman Leopard.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Gillig.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
And Jones.
Yes.
The suspension passes with a vote of six to zero. We will now vote on the passage.
Councilwoman Leopard.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Gillig.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
And Jones.
Yes.
Order twenty-one dash seven passes with a vote of six to zero.
Ordinance number twenty-one dash eight introduced by Ben Gillig, ordinance amending two thousand twenty-one budget ordinance twenty dash one twenty-two to appropriate five thousand dollars in the street department budget for an unemployment compensation claim.
This is the first reading of ordinance twenty-one dash eight. Councilman Gillig. Councilman Gillig.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I would like to request suspension of counsel's three reading rule and immediate passage of ordinance twenty-one dash eight.
We have a motion to suspend the counsel's three reading rule and immediate passage of ordinance twenty-one dash eight. Is there a second? Councilwoman Yanatuno.
I'll second, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm not nitpicking, but on ordinance twenty-one dash eight, there's one small word there, "and." So, this five thousand is for one employee unemployment compensation or a group. Uh, if it's one individual, that sounds like a, a lot of dollars for an unemployment claim.
No, this is
Finance Director.
This was just chosen by me as an amount, not knowing going forward how long we will have to pay this claim. Uh, so I'm hoping that we won't need to use all of that, and I know that we're going to get an invoice, so we need to get money in the budget. Hopefully, we won't need five thousand dollars.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the vote on suspension, please.
Yes.
Pardon me?
What?
I'm voting, yes.
Sorry.
Yes.
Thank you. Yes, okay. Councilman Perry.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Gillig.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
And Jones.
Yes.
The suspension passes with a vote of six to zero. We will now vote on the passage.
Councilwoman Leopard.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Gillig.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
And Jones.
Yes.
Order twenty-one dash eight passes with a vote of six to zero.
That concludes the ordinances, Mr. President.
Thank you. Um, is there anything else for the good of the order? Councilman Jones, make it brief.
I, I always do, don't I? Um, on the agenda here, uh, did we talk about twenty-one thirty-seven, or was I, again, not paying attention at the bottom of tabled ordinances?
No, that's still tabled.
Still tabled. Thank you.
Yep. Anyone else? I should have done this at the beginning of, uh, of the meeting, because I don't know how many people are still listening to this, but I just want to give a shout out to Mercy Hospital. Um, I, I just want to, uh, uh, thank them. I, I just, I got outstanding care when I went there. I tell everybody, I got, I got the President Trump treatment. I got the same medications that he got, and I've talked to other, other people in other hospitals that are, are surprised that, uh, that we, we had those things on, on stock, but I got Rhendesevere and, uh, steroid, and, uh, I just want people to know that, two things. First of all, this is treatable. Uh, secondly, we have a great, uh, we just have a great hospital here. The staff is wonderful. I've, I've been to that hospital a few times. I've never gotten better care, uh, nursing care, uh, than I have at, uh, at Mercy Hospital, and that includes the Cleveland Clinic. So, uh,
Wow.
Yeah, I'm honest. I'm being very honest here. They're just wonderful out there. They do a great job. They care about people. Sometimes they get a bad rap, and I'm just, I, I thank God every day that, uh, we have them in our community, so I just want to, I want everybody to know that. Uh, they, they were wonderful. So, anybody else? Anything else? All right, well, God bless you all. Have a great night, good week, and, uh, we'll see you later.
We're adjourned.
Thanks, everyone.